Calling the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, March 18th, 2024. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. Tonight, we're going to start with the board and administration roll calls. Mr. Felton, here. Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Danielson?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Getzko?
Here.
Mr. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Henin?
Here.
Mr. Gerton?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Payton?
Here.
Ms. Dimmer?
Here.
Mr. Veal?
Here.
Mr. Samansky?
Here.
All right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have one public comment tonight. So Ms. Callenberg, if you wanted to come up and address the board?
Hello, can you hear me? Is that on? Oh, okay. I'm guessing you can hear me, but, cool. Well, hello Watertown Mayor's School Board and Superintendent Schuler. I'm Julie Callenberg, one of the two phys ed teachers and development adapted phys ed teachers from the elementary school. I've been teaching about 17 years in the area. Since you and the finance committee will be making some budget reductions and reallocations in April, I'm here to advocate for the children in our Watertown Mayor Elementary School to keep receiving their phys ed minutes for 120 minutes a week. From the Cooper Institute where the Fitness Graham standardized fitness test originated, research shows that students who are physically fit perform better in school, have higher reading and math scores, fewer behavioral issues. But 48% of the US students don't attend weekly phys ed class. The CDC recommends 60 minutes of exercise per day for children ages 6 to 12 to reduce symptoms of depression, prevent risk factors for heart disease, obesity, and type 2 diabetes. A little closer to home, our Watertown Mayor Elementary School specialist team has two phys ed, one music, and one innovation teacher. And in the past, the library or media center specialist was part of the team, but that position is not part of the specialist's schedule anymore. With 530 students at Watertown Mayor Elementary School, each of our two phys ed and development adapted phys ed teachers carry 13 of the 23 classes and teach six to eight development adapted special ed students. We implement five national phys ed standards and 170 benchmarks from SHAPE, which is Society of Health and Phys Ed. These national standards are an integral part of the Watertown Mayor 2028 strategic plan because they do not only promote physical health, but mental, social, and emotional health stamina, which are valuable attributes to our students and their educational outcomes. Since 1987, here's a little history, the Watertown Mayor Elementary School has had two phys ed teachers with DAP students placed into random open specialist schedule slots. Since 2016, two phys ed teachers have carried 13 to 15 classes. Students have received 120 minutes of phys ed a week, whether it was four times a week in 30-minute classes, or two times a week, which is currently right now, in 60-minute classes. Before 2016, classes were about 100 minutes a week, four times a week, at 25 minutes, so a little shorter. DAP students were always seen two days a week at 20 minutes a session. And our schools, three of our Watertown Mayor schools, have two phys ed teachers in each school, but elementary has the highest enrollment, again, at 530 students. If we lose any of our elementary phys ed teachers, that means we also lose an adaptive phys ed teacher. So I'm concerned about our children being pushed into poor health habits, lower mental health, childhood obesity, or requiring health risk factors due to falling fitness levels if our program has to reduce the amount of minutes a week. So let's work toward raising student enrollment and keeping our elementary phys ed DAP programs strong. Let's allow each of our Watertown Mayor students to receive top-notch amount of physical ed minutes, which are necessary to develop their fundamental movement skills and fitness levels that contribute to their successful educational opportunities and connections. And thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I do have a few bullet points. I didn't ask if I could hand that out, but I need to check. Bullet points on that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving along, is there a motion to approve the agenda and addendums?
I'll move. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Right along to the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes for February 26, 2024, the personnel consent agenda, which also contains the para contract in there as well, and the business consent agenda.
And first, I'd like to say thank you to the professional group, working with us in negotiations. Glad to see that's across the finish line, so, thank you. And with that, I'd make a motion to, or move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving along to the recognitions, presentations, and showcase. Mr. Samansky, looks like you've got a big job ahead of you.
Thank you, Heather, for putting these all together for us. All right. March is always a fun time of the year. It's always fun to recognize our successful winter programs, and we had a lot of success this winter. Couple of individual awards that we'd like to recognize first. We have Section 5A Assistant Coach of the Year for the second time in three years, Deb Hengardner. We're going to go out of order a little bit, just to make it flow a little bit, but we'll go with the order that's on the agenda here. The State Coaches Association Double A Co-Coaches of the Year for the second time, also in three years, Mr. Bill McDonald and Kurt Becker.
I almost didn't recognize Mr. McDonald with a clean face.
Say, who is that young fellow?
I know.
We also had two swimmers in our co-op with Delano advanced to the state meet. We had Sam Daniels and Zach Lohman. Steve, want to come up?
Hi, I'm Steve Hengardner, head coach of the gymnastics team. We had a nice year this year, it was kind of a rebuilding year, but they really came through. We started out and built ourselves up to finish second in the state, but they were, they're undefeated, they, let's see what else, they won the, took second in the state for the academic, having the highest grade point average. And so I'll just go ahead and, we had eight girls qualify as individuals, and actually, Maggie, it was her fifth year in a row to make it. Payton has gone three times, Evelyn twice, it was Grace's first year, well, I'll call out their names here, I'm just going to, all right, my name, I'll put that down. Deb Hengardner, come on out. Michael Erickson, one of our coaches, come on up, Mike. Rosie, come on up, Rosie. Camellion? Camilla, sorry about that. All right, and Haley Anthony. Ariana Mead. Peyton Hexel. Evelyn Milky. Grace McCabe. And Maddie Sanders. Great group of girls to work with. Like I said, we had the best coaches in the state, and we had, Haley was on the bars, and Ariana competed at the state meet on the bars. Payton was in three events, won the section with a 9.3 on beam. Maggie finished 10th in the state meet as all-rounder and was fifth on the beam. Evelyn was at the state, qualified on the vault, and then competed on vault and floor. Callie finished sixth in the state on beam, and also alternated on the bars. Grace competed on the floor and the vault, and she had some of her highest scores at the state meet. And then Maddie Sanders also competed on beam, bars, alternated on floor, vault, and she had her, one of her highest scores of the year, a 9.4 on bars, so. Great group to work with, and thanks for inviting us.
Can you guys squish for me? Squish a little bit for me. Perfect. Yeah, Coach, that means you've got to get in there too. All right, you guys, well done. Now you can applaud, thank you.
Yay.
This year, the wrestling team placed sixth in the state tournament, qualified for the second time in the last three years, so, three years ago was our first time ever in program history, so able to follow it up this year, and defeated Scott West in the section finals, who was ranked fourth in the state at the time to qualify for state, so.
Evil empire.
Yes. Now they are, we are the team to beat now, so, yeah, so we're going to recognize these men that were able to make it. I know quite a few had different activities and stuff tonight that were not able to make it, so. We also qualified six individuals, which will have their certificates at the end, and then, for the first time in program history, had three state finalists, two state champions, and a state runner-up, so, a very good finish to the year for these gentlemen, so. Assistant Coach Troy Peterson. Lucas Dryer is a senior. Another manager, Lily McMahon. Senior Jack Entinger, Jack was a qualifier as an individual as well. Two-time state champion, Titan Fredericks. Two-time place winner and a runner-up, Joel Fredericks. Bryce is a four-time place winner and a state champion this year, Bryce Burkett. Yeah, these guys had a great year, and just like Steve said, we have one of the best coaching staffs in the state. We're really blessed with the people that come in and help support these wrestlers, so, thank you for appreciating us tonight.
I have one question. Is the hair color a nod to Mr. Becker?
They're trying to be like me.
Yeah.
No. But I think on the hair color, one of the coolest things is the impact that these guys have. If you came to elementary school after we qualified for state, and these guys started coloring their black, you saw a whole bunch of little youth wrestlers with black hair trying to be like their heroes, so, that's pretty cool. All action.
Guys, can you squish for me?
Not very much.
What?
Thank you guys so much, hang on. Now we have lost.
Thank you guys for coming tonight, congratulations on all the success. Keep it up, expect this all next year too, right?
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Give him a chance to exit.
You can be dismissed now.
Unless you want to stay.
Unless you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, more than happy.
Good job, Lily.
Thank you.
We'll just wait a minute for everyone to file out.
So on Facebook, that McDonald had that beard for 15 years, and now he finally?
Yeah, I know, that's why I didn't recognize it, I was like.
Probably squirrels and chipmunks later on. All it took was getting him on social media, and look what happened.
Said I had enough of it.
Was that because they went to state, he had to shave it? Was that the?
I don't know. Should have asked, yeah, we missed that one.
All right, moving on to the action items. Item A, acknowledgement of donation, contributions, and fundraising. Superintendent Schuler?
Mr. Chair and Board members, we'd like to recognize a number of donations that came in over the last month. We'll call those out and who those items were donated to. So, the American Legion Post 121, who by the way is meeting next door, so you hear the laughter and the noise, they're meeting next door, but again, want to thank them for a $1,000 donation for super mileage, again, for materials needed to improve their super mileage vehicle. Also, the Legion Post donated to the Spanish and German programs for $2,000 to offset costs for the Spanish and German trip coming up this summer. So again, thank you to them. One last item from the Legion is donation to Industrial Tech for $1,000 for a heavy metal cutting miter, chop saw, and blade, so again, very nice donation. Also, Lions Club here in Watertown to Watertown Mayor Health Services for $3,000 for the help of cost for the outside AED, which we'll be installing later this summer, but the $3,000 was a very, very nice generous donation to help secure that device. And then George Buell, local gentleman, donation to the robotics program for $250 for robotic supplies, so thank you to all those individuals and the Legion and Lions Club.
And thank you always for the donations.
I make a motion to approve the donations and contributions?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. O'Neal. Any further discussion on the donations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B, the first and only read of district policies requiring annual review. Mr. Schuler?
Yes, Mr. Chair, our first and only read of the 500 series are listed below. The policy committee met a couple weeks ago to review these policies. We are recommending a first and only read. Remember, the 500 series is student-related policy, so these are all relation into, relation to students, so, and many of these, again, were part of the legislation that was changed this summer, so, those had been previewed earlier and approved earlier in the summer, or I guess more probably August, October-ish, but no substantial changes to this first group.
I'll make a motion to approve the first and only read of the, these 500 series Motion made by Mr. Felton, seconded by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion on those policies? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, the first read of district policies requiring annual review. Mr. Schuler?
Mr. Chair, we do have three policies and two forms that need to be just updated. Policy 515 is protection of privacy of pupil records, and there's just some changes there that are recommended by MSBA in terms of what we currently have in policy, so, again, this is protecting student data. Ms. Hewan, I know maybe you had a few items there, just to clarify, if you wouldn't mind just speaking to that a little bit?
So in August, if you recall, MSBA, the state of Minnesota had declared that certain student information, student email, name, address, and phone number were all considered directory information but protected by the state of Minnesota. Now that's in direct conflict with what FERPA is saying. So this policy gets a little confusing for people, because FERPA is saying you can access directory information, but the state of Minnesota has said, no, actually, you can't. If it includes this, 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 then it's not included in directory information and thus not allowed to be released. In our policy, we also included parents' names and addresses and phone numbers. What we didn't include was emails. Now, the state of Minnesota directs boards to make their own decisions as to what they determine to be directory information and what's going to be considered private information, protected information. So when we had the policy committee, the policy committee decided to include email addresses for the parents. It had been a loophole for people requesting information because parent email addresses were not included in that directory information with everything else. So, the policy committee decided to make better clarity, include the email address, add another whole sentence later on in the policy that gives better clarification for people requesting information, to understand that because we have the power as a policy committee, we will not be including parent, any parent information or student information for public request. Does that make sense?
You can take a breath now.
I know, I make a lot of money at commercial.
No, I think it makes sense.
The next one is also a part of 515, that's the actual form that is used. I think the only change there was just updating our district website, where to find that actual policy, so that is an update there, and then, as Heather was noting, address, telephone listing, electronic email address was a part of that. So this is a form that we're continuing to kind of massage here over the next month, bring it back to you in April. So this is a forum that we're continuing to kind of massage here over the next month, bring it back to you in April.
And we're also double checking with MSBA to make sure that we're online.
And I'm assuming the policy committee is going to meet before.
Yes.
Next month too. Perfect.
No approval.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, second by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion on those first policy reads? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D, Watertown Mayor Facilities Handbook. Mr. Schuler and Ms. Dimler.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we'd like to present tonight the 2024-2025 Facilities Handbook. Ms. Dimler and her staff have worked really hard over the last couple of years to really redefine this handbook. And I know she has some updates that she would like to share tonight for the board. So you get a little bit of an update on where some of those changes are occurring. So I'll click over to your update page, Ms. Dimler.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So reviewing the handbook is an annual process. We usually start January to start looking at how we have things laid out, our fees, our forms. And we just start making updates that we think will be beneficial and help streamline our process. So in updating the handbook, the first thing we did was make sure that it's aligned with the district handbooks. So that's one of the changes we made. We did add some wording to page two around organizations or groups who come in to rent our facility and run programming, running that through community ed if they do not have an official registration system. We also, I also worked with Ms. Nathan with the boosters on our concessions to make sure that our concession rental process is aligned with the boosters. And so we not only aligned the language, but we also aligned the form. We looked at fees, looked at our neighbors, what their fees, not a lot of changes happening right now with our surrounding communities. So the only change we made to fees was the pool. We increased that by $10 because of our recent construction. And then our capped user fee, we just increased that by $50 to help continue supporting our facilities. And then just going through our forms just to make sure they look good, they're easy to use, they're fillable. So those are the changes for the facilities at 2425. Any questions?
And then the community ed group has also, committee has also reviewed this prior.
As well as all the, it's gone out to all the youth sports groups, our facility renters, just to give them a chance to review and see if they have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the Watertown Mayor Facilities Handbook.
I'll second. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Felth, second by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion on the handbook? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And that ends the action items of the evening. Moving on to the review and information items, the revised FY '24 budget. Ms. Raider.
Good evening.
Speak loud.
I can speak loud. They made me mic up, so.
Keep going.
Okay. Good evening. In your agenda was a budget summary, which has our adopted 24 budget alongside with a projected revised budget. I'm just going to do a couple of highlights on it and then ask for any questions. The revenue budget is pretty much staying constant. There's a small increase of about 14,000. This revenue budget is based on ADM of 1,480 total ADMs of the district, which is 1,465 ADM K through 12. I don't perceive much changes there.
And ADMs, the pupil count.
Average daily attendance.
Could you say that number one more time, please?
1480 is what the whole district. And then K through 12 is 1465.32, I think. For expenditures, I have a revised budget which increases the expenditures of about 263,000. 50% of that is in the object series of purchase services. We do have sped placement, which we didn't know about, which is driving some of that increase. About 46% of the increase is salary and benefits, which comes from our negotiations of our contracts. And the remaining 6% is fees, not fees, supplies, equipment, some changes there. If you remember back in June of 2023, when we revised this budget, we predicted that the fund balance, identifying fund balance would go up 1.1 million. And the reason it's going up is because of the abatement project. We borrowed from the general fund until we received the actual Fund VII abatement funds. So we're paying that back. So that is why our unassigned fund balance is increasing. If we were not deficit spending, that increase should be about 1.7 million dollars, which is what the abatement payment was. We did predict it in June of '23 at 1.1. So we were deficit spending about 513,000. With the increase of the 260,000, 63,000 of the revised budget, that puts us in the ballpark of about $776,000 of deficit spending. It's a projection of about 923,000 increase to the unassigned fund balance. Again, if we were deficit spending, it should be about 1.7. So we are going to be more than likely deficit spending. Please remember that these are all estimates. There's no guarantee on any budget that I've ever made or probably will ever make. This is just the information that I know now, what I think is going to happen. And then we will know these results in November. So with saying all that, you, we're at a position if everything goes as the budget is projected, will be about 12.4% of our fund balance to our total expenditures. That is getting into the position where we want to sort of stay. Our fund balance policy is between 7 and 20%, but 10 to 15% is a pretty nice number to be at. We don't want to get too low because if things happen like sped placements that we don't know about, we wouldn't have money to be able to adjust for that if we get down low. Or unexpected, we just had a plumbing issue with our pipes that was about $50,000. So I mean, we have to have funds available to be able to react to things that happen. So in the next couple of years, next year '25 and next year '26, we need to adjust our expenditures. So at least we're making, I mean, expending as much as we're making in revenue. So we want to try to avoid deficit spending. Because remember, when you deficit spend, you're spending it one time. Once it's gone, there's no replacement of it. You only have your revenues that are coming in the new year and the year that you're in. So that's what I've been talking to the finance board about and the administrative team. And so do you have any questions for me on just what I predict? The possibility of our fund balance at the end of this year? And again, this will come to the board for approval in June along with the '25 budget. But this is just a hello.
So right now, at the end of the year, 12.4% fund balance.
Unassigned.
Unassigned, sorry. Unassigned fund balance. Okay.
What I'm predicting.
And then obviously you're working on the budget for next year to determine that. Okay.
We have done five-year projections that I did take to the finance board. The problem with the five-year projection is, of course, we know expenditures are going up. We know that because of inflation and our contracts and everything like that. We don't know what the revenue is going to do because the state has only confirmed one year ahead of us. So there are portions of our revenue budget we know, like our taxes, we know a year ahead. But that's 14% of our budget. And we know our fees and stuff, and that's again about 10%. So the majority of our budget comes from the state, which we don't know what they're going to do. So that's why we can do a five-year projection and I can put in that we're going to get 2%, but that's no guarantee. And plus, when you having all of your expenditures go up by 3% to 5% and your revenue is going only up by 2%, of course, in five years, you're going to be in the negative. It's just the way it works. So we, you can look at a five-year, but really your two years out is really where you need to do the, you know, the work that you have. That's really the, as far as you really can project because it's such an unknown.
And based on, I know I've seen him, but I can't remember. Based on sort of that, that two-year out with what we know from the state, where do we know where we're going to? Right now, all chips off the table. Where were fund balances would be next year and that following year provided nothing.
If we did absolutely nothing except for contractual obligations and putting in at least 3% for our fee for service. Because that's, and some of them is higher, some of them are lower, but just.
It's a crystal ball.
Right. We would be deficit spending in '25 by about 1.5 million, 2.3 million in '26, 2.9 million in '17. I mean, as I said, these are so extrapolated. So that's why, and that's doing absolutely nothing. Same revenue with a 2% increase and then of course the increases for staff and.
So with the 1.5 next year, that would bring us to what from a fund balance do you have that?
I have about 2.3.
Okay.
Ending, just a minute, I have it. I think it was 2.3 at the end of '24. So then that 2.3, now you're going to put me on the spot.
It would be in the negative.
Yes. No, not yet.
Not yet. Oh, the two years out.
Two years out.
Two years out would be in the negative.
We'd be in SOD.
And that would be, you know, statutory operating debt.
Yes.
The state would be running our finances. Kind of. Is that how that works?
Yes. We have to have a plan.
Have to have a plan.
In conjunction with the state, yes.
Okay.
But that's worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario. Yep, gotcha.
Right.
On the '24 budget, is there any other questions for Ms. Raider? So coming in June to approve the revised budget, audited in November, right? Okay. Got to get my Tomians right.
Yep.
Alrighty. Well, thank you for that update. So. Moving on, FY '25 program and budget reductions. Mr. Schuler.
Yeah. Sorry, it's not going to slideshow presentation. All right, we'll just go without that model. Just to give you a little bit background as board, as a board, this past week I met with all the buildings, elementary, high school and middle school. I'm circling back to the CLC on Wednesday. But just to give a general overview of kind of the why we're at, where we're at and currently in our budget situation. Again, just providing some background and for folks to have some opportunity to weigh in and ask questions. I'll just walk you through the slideshow that I shared with them. And at the end, we'll talk a little about the proposed reductions and how we got to those. So again, as we talked about earlier and Ms. Raider highlighted, but our revenue budget, you can see where most of our revenue is coming from. And as Lisa mentioned, it truly is the state, MDE and the state of Minnesota is 70% of our budget. And the local levy is at about 15%. So you can see where our revenue is coming in. In terms of our expenditures, we shared out that again, over 50% of our revenues and expenditures, excuse me, expenditures that are coming in is salaries and then benefits are about that 16% as well. That's the majority of where our money is going out. Also, just highlighting a little bit more of just where our district come from, our funds come from. The biggest thing on this particular slide that we highlighted was the fact that our pandemic relief money, our COVID funding was really a nice buoy over the last three years to kind of keep us staffed at a level that really supported us during some difficult times. And if you remember, that COVID funding provided additional staff and our intervention staff support for testing, PPE technology. We did a big purchase that first year of technology, especially at the middle school, high school, to get us ready to communicate and do some of the synchronous learning that we were doing at that time or asynchronous. And then summer school funding, mental health supports were a big part of that. This next slide, again, not a great slide visually, but I think the key pieces to take away here is the first part of that graph, if you will, is the 2021 school year. And we received roughly about $561,000. And you can see where that money was allocated to. The second year in '21-'22, again, right around that $580,000 in pandemic relief funding. And then that final year, '22-'23 school year, again, about $446,000. So in the last those three years, you know, roughly $1.7 million was a huge lift for us as a district and in many districts in the state as well. As we talked about just a little bit here earlier, that unassigned fund balance history is a good viewpoint of where we are, where we were and kind of where we're headed. Again, with that high point of a 19% unassigned fund balance in 2021. And you can start to see that decline. Obviously, we talked about that dip with the abatement bond, kind of borrowing against our general fund dollars there to make that right and adding it to the abatement bond with the middle school road project. And then back to that 13% roughly in 2024. Also too, just to note, we've had a lot of dedicated buckets of money. And this is important for folks to understand and that we do have targets of money that are just targeted for a certain area. And ADSS has been a really a nice funding stream coming out of COVID. We've had ADSS dollars in the past, but we were able to re-up our grant and get some additional staffing. And again, the funding on ADSS is unique in that it's 50% roughly district paid, 50% paid by the state. And so these positions, which we, we know are really valuable, we were able to kind of buoy those, keep those going and especially the behavior interventionist piece have been really beneficial in both the elementary and the middle school. Commensatory dollars, again, the state did provide some additional compensatory dollars this last legislative session, which was really beneficial and again tied to free reduced lunch counts. One of the neat things there is again, our academic intervention teachers in the elementary were funded through that. One at the middle school as well, and then some small ELL staffing and ALP staffing in the high school. But we've certainly seen the benefit of those intervention teachers at the elementary and the middle school and what a difference that's made. So again, very, very much a bucket for that, that piece. Then lastly, there's a fund called learning and development funding. We were able to afford four teachers out of that pot of money, again, dedicated just for learning and development. I know Lisa's quoted that typically to the elementary over the last number of years. Again, enrollment trends, just wanted to paint that picture of kind of where we are with the ADMs. And again, as the average daily membership is how we get paid as a district. And we call that the butts in seats, if you will. But again, the biggest piece there is probably the bottom where we talk about that ADM loss from 2017 to 2023 is about 90 ADMs. And if you equate that, it's about a $618,000 roughly loss in revenue now annually. So that's a big, that's a big chunk of our operations. Again, this is more that visual of the enrollment trends that we've seen in the district. And again, at the high point there in 2017 of that 1572 students. And then kind of a little blip there before COVID. And then in 2019, '20, as we went into COVID, we saw a significant drop in student enrollment coming out of COVID that following year. Now again, most years when that would have occurred, we probably would have made some budget adjustments. We would have made those reductions or adjustments at that time. But again, going back to a few slides earlier, that COVID money really kind of kept us at a nice staffing level. a nice staffing level, probably a little bit overstaffed at that time, but it was really great coming out of COVID to support students that we knew had some pretty serious learning loss. And so that was, that was important. But now you can see kind of how we're starting to level off moving forward into 2024. And I think our projections looking out again, are probably more typical to that 1465 number. We see the next five years kind of being around that, that trend line. Also, just a note here, and again, this is approximate, this is some of the information that's been sent out by superintendents locally. But I think again, Maritamare is not unique in terms of what we're going through right now. Districts are saying two things. It's, it's the COVID money drop, we've lost that, and the enrollment decline have, have really impacted a lot of districts. So districts, Rockford, who's very similar to us in size, about $900,000 in cuts. Buffalo, 1.5 million, I think over a two-year stretch, they're looking at that on the second year as well. And then Eastern Carver County, about 3 million. Central, 400,000. New Prague, about 3 million. And then Waconia, as we've talked about, had a major reduction last year of about 4.5 million, which was pretty impactful to their staffing. And then again, this to me was kind of the telling tale, came out a few weeks ago, that about 70% of our metro area schools are facing some type of reduction in '24, '25. So pretty significant. The next slide, it just talks a little bit about how we went through this process when Ms. Rader mid, mid February or so just kind of said it's, we're looking at, we need to make that next step into looking at possible reductions. So we pulled the admin team together, which was really principals and myself, and really started taking a deep dive into, you know, possible reductions, possible reallocations, and then any revenues that could be generated at, at any of the buildings. And that was the first step. We met a multiple times in discussion and that was a, a really good process. What they did then is brought kind of a list, a, a large list back to the finance committee for their review on March 7th. They had an opportunity to take a look at that and, and get a little more background on kind of the why we were looking at certain areas. They gave us some feedback. I was able to take that back to the admin team and, and let's, let's kind of fine tune this a little bit. We were able to then to bring it back to the finance meeting last Wednesday for another follow-up meeting. That's where we kind of honed in on what is our, our, our final list. And then tonight, obviously, we're presenting those recommendations for reductions, reallocations and revenues with, with you, the entire board. And then the, the next month, in the April 22nd meeting, we'd be asking the board then to approve or disapprove the, the resolutions that we placed before you. So does that part make sense to everybody? So the reductions themselves, I know you've had a chance to look at those, had a chance to review those since the board packet went out. Are there any questions or any clarifications that you need to, for us to, to highlight or to, to clarify? So just to note, again, two areas that, you know, the, the community ed building, one of the reasons we did not meet with them originally because they were not impacted. Obviously, community ed runs out of a different fund. So generally speaking, they're, they're not affected by this. With that said, we are meeting with them on Wednesday to kind of walk through that. Special ed is another area that it was not touched. At this point in time, our staffing and special ed, its dedicated funding, we're, we're good there and maybe even a little understaffed at times, but we're, we're, we're fine there. And then again, we, we listed on the first page, the number of, of reductions. You can see the FTEs. And then on the second page, again, just looking more at some of the programs that would be impacted by the reductions. So about $317,000 roughly in, in actual staff cuts. And then the other piece of that would be just in program reductions, 113,000 for a grand total of $430,682. And, and we broke that down into non-staffing, it's about 26% of the reductions. Staffing would be about 74% of the reductions. Lastly, again, we are looking at certain areas in, as well, and one thing we could not do is put dollar amounts to these items at this point in time. We do have some time here over the next month to, to possibly add these, but one is we're looking at standardizing the district software and technology, just to make sure we're making, we're not doubling up on things and we're using those effectively and, and getting the full use out of those apps and software items. The other one is, is as always, looking at athletics and activities for possible reductions. If there's any areas there that we could possibly reduce going into next school year, again, looking at ratios, coaching ratios to student athlete or participant ratios to see how that would possibly affect the, the overall budget. One other one we're talking about is early retirement incentive. So again, typically you have to be over 55 years of age and have taught for 15 years to qualify for that. We, we thought originally that we had missed the deadline of February 1st as a state statute, but we learned that districts can individually work with individuals to work on a, on a compromise potentially to, to have a, a plan to move forward. So right now, I know we're, there's some outreach happening with the teacher group to look at if anybody possibly interested in that. No details obviously are dollars attached to that, but that's just some early discussions if, if there's any benefit to the district and to the individual to retire early. So I think the district did that. I want to say 2010, Lisa, was the last time, 2008 was the last time I think the district entertained that option and it was certainly beneficial at the time. And last year, last but not least, certainly, we know the middle school and high school probably need to be more efficient. We are looking at some things probably next year as a, an overall planning year of just, is, is the four-period day, the, the, the four-period block day going to continue? We know we have to look at some shared staff options in the middle school and high school. I think the leg of that, the, the majority of that work's going to have to happen the following year, but next year would be a planning year to, just to dig a little deeper on how do we possibly be more in align to the middle school and high school schedules? So, so that's a lot. Any information that you need, certainly feel free to.
And has been mentioned, the finance committee has met a couple of different times over this. The administration provided kind of a great recommendations for us and, and you know, we kind of went through and obviously with the lens and the optic of opportunities and connections, right? I mean, that's, we don't want to take away any opportunities or as minimal opportunities that we can for our students. However, it's, you know, the, the revenue or the, our expenses are 70, what is it, 60%? Staffing and benefits. So unfortunately, you know, some, there's something, have to some of that reductions there. And, and from my understanding or my recollection, by doing it, if, if that 430,000 is, is right, all things being equal, at the end of next year, Lisa, we're going to be roughly about, what, about eight, 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 nine, 8.9% of our unassigned fund balance?
Possibly, yes.
So we're still going to be deficit spending next year, even with that 430,000. Correct statement? All right. So it's, this isn't the panacea, this isn't 100% going to right the ship, which is why we talk, you mentioned about the, the future alignment in the middle school, the high school, whether it's to technology alignment to kind of looking at contracts and tools that we're using, those types of other things which are a little bit longer, that take more work, I would say. Anybody else from the finance committee have anything else to mention? Or did I kind of cover it all?
I think you covered it.
How many years do we look at? I mean, how many, if we're looking at reductions, like how many years in a row of reductions then? I mean, if you're having to make them, then do you look at going out for an additional levy then? Like what's, what's the average? Like do we wait three years? You know? I, I don't know. I don't, I mean, because I went through the last levy, but I don't know how long, you know? Do you understand what I'm asking? Maybe, yeah?
And, and, and maybe Katie, Joe. My, my stance on the finance committee was I'm okay deficit spending next year, a bit.
Yeah.
I, 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 we have to, and any of those, any of those reductions, we have to kind of spread out.
Right.
Over time. So we know we're deficit spending, we're just trying to, it, it right-size.
Yeah.
You know, with the declining enrollment, we have to rewrite size after, after COVID. We've done, we've helped the students immensely, you know, coming out of that with all the supports and stuff and unfortunately, that well has dried. So we have to.
Right. And I, I mean, I get that, I'm just curious, like, I don't know if it's in our policies, like, I don't know, when do we start looking at? I mean, after three years, four years?
What we've talked about is that, you know, this is year one of, of some reductions, year two, the following year would be another round. The number I think at this point is, is pretty vague, but I think, you know, according to what we've talked about, if we can do two years and get us, like Hunter said, more right-sized, I think, you know, that would probably be it. And I think hopefully we can maintain that moving forward, that accurate.
Yeah, and from my recollection, it's like, there's too many unknowns with the revenues, what the state might do.
Right.
You know, to kind of look much past two years at this point. So we kind of said two years, we've got a, a bit of a, you know, ballpark number that we want to shoot for.
Yeah.
For cuts. So that's where we're at.
Hopefully after then, we don't have to anymore.
Yeah, that's obviously the, would be the best case scenario.
Right.
The best case scenario would be the state.
Yes, with their 3.9 billion surplus this year.
However, was, would, you know, as of now on the funding bill for this, there's no mention of education at all.
No.
For additional funding either, so.
No.
Obviously, that could change, but as of now, there's no mention of it, so.
Seems like the big one was getting everyone fed. I mean, that was the last big push and after that, there seems to be no talk, so.
So these other programs, additional programs that you're still looking at, is there anything on there that would maybe replace some of the recommendations that you shared with us today? Or is that, you know, additional things that we may consider?
Yeah, no, I think it's, you know, you have a couple of ways to look at that. If there's anything additional, it could be, you know, less impact the following year, obviously, or there's things on here that you could say on that list that's recommended are things that we could pull off potentially, yes, if there's more cost savings here. Again, lot to play out, the early retirement piece. Obviously, we have a short window to get that done. We hope to get it done and I think April 1st was the deadline that people would have to come forward to say that, at least they're interested and then we could start the negotiation process, but it's hard to say at this point how many people might step forward. But I mean, that's certainly something we would consider.
But again, it's, it seems like it's going to be a multi-year approach.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
You may keep something, you kick something off of this list, but it's going to be back on there next year. You're, you're kind of kicking the can down the road. Not saying it's not going to happen, these are just the recommendations.
Yeah.
Obviously, you will know more next month as some of the other pieces play out a little bit better. But yeah, it's, it's, these are just the recommendations.
So I just have a question back to the, like, budget ADM numbers. Obviously, lots of school districts are dealing with the same thing of less students. Do we have any idea where they're all going? I mean, if all these districts are losing students, are they all going to private schools, homeschooling? I'm just curious if we have any.
Combination and, and online learning schools. I would say.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. I think, you know, the, the multiple of other options that are out there, I think we're obviously competing with. And I think, like Heather said, it was a combination of, of looking at non-public options, looking at homeschooling, you know, and I think those are the two main ones.
And also our national birth rate is just down. It's down like a lot, by almost like a full percent.
And I have been tracking our birth rates per month.
Yeah.
About a year.
Yeah.
Almost a year. So I am tracking how many births are in our district every month.
And is it declining?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll try and access that document for you quickly.
And, and also too, you know, just even from our, our district, you know, are we building new houses? Are, are we, are we building affordable housing so we can get those young families in? Are you pricing them out so it's going to be more the, you know, the ones where the kids have already left and are in college? So there, there's lots that kind of play into that, into that number, but I mean, even looking at enrollment from last year was one of our, what our, our graduating class last year was one of the biggest ever, right? It was 140 something-ish and we had, we barely made it to 100 kindergarteners. That's a 40 student swing in, in funding. You know, that's 40 kids roughly, you know, and of revenue that we just don't see. So again, I, I think it's more just about the right sizing. You know, I, I know, you know, I know Superintendent Schuler, I know the marketing committee, you know, we're, we're trying to beat down that drawer, that drum. How do we get more kids into the door? You know, I mean, this is another example of what happens if we can't. You know, whether we're losing them to the homeschooling, whether we're losing them to online learning, neighboring district, whatever it might be.
Do we know if Mayor Lutheran's middle school took off this year? Did they get any students?
Well, it's proposed to start next year.
Oh, next year?
Mm-hmm.
And just for your information, over the last seven months, we have had four months under birth rate of 10. So four of the seven were under 10 new births in our district.
Next, I heard nationally, I think there are less, the population is less from ages 10 under than our 60-plus. So our under 10, you know, population is not even matching our 60-plus, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a national issue.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, our, you know, they have to start recognizing that, I think, from a government level.
Any other commentary, questions, concerns, discussion? Does it all make sense?
It does.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, thank you, Lisa, for all the information. Mr. Schuler, thanks for providing the, the slide deck. And so next steps is obviously final recommendations are going to be brought next board meeting. Between here and there, further discussion, further refinement. Fair enough?
Correct.
Assuming as a finance committee, we're going to meet at least once, twice, three, 15, every other day, Lisa?
No.
No? Okay. But we, we will be meeting or then a couple of times over the next month just to hone this down and, and bring the final recommendations to the bigger board, so. Alrighty, well, thank you again for all that information. Moving on, strategic plan update, Mr. Schuler.
Yes, I'm Mr. Chair and Board. Our, our March strategic plan update will be coming out next week, but it is partnership. So that is the commitment that we'll be focusing in on. If you remember, when we were going through the process last year was again, excuse me, this piece was really to connect those offerings to meet the needs of our students in community with a real focus on community education. We call this Ms. Dimmler's commitment because a lot of that data is being pulled from the work that we do in community ed. So we'll, our vision card shows a participant survey where we get a look at the percentage of participants who felt the course met or exceeded their expectations. I know she'll have that data coming out here soon. And then also we review data, participation, programming, and just general staffing too that was interesting to see through a year of the community ed lens. So that'll be collected as well here soon, so that'll all go back into our vision card to see how, how we're doing in comparison to last year, so.
And could you provide that out once we know the data?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that it then?
That's it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Admin reports. So we're going to start tonight with Mr. Henon.
Good evening. Just a few updates for you. We finished our registration process with any feedback.
We finished our registration process with any feedback from kids. So, now we're just in the process of cleaning everything up and deciding which courses are going to be offered. You know, a few very similar trends, as I always do, but really high number of juniors and seniors taking college in the school's courses, that really hasn't changed. Our CT numbers also are really, really high. I think this is the highest probably I've ever seen for the woods courses. I think we have over 70 for Intro to Woods and almost 70 for Basic Woods. So, again, we got a good number for the greenhouse and plant science, which is exciting, just, you know, that nice new building, I actually saw kids in there today and everything, so it's nice that that's being used. But again, the work, you know, will come in the next few weeks with cleaning all that up. But our kids do a really good job of taking an active interest in that. Obviously, they access the counselors, but again, they, you know, they're pretty, somewhat independent as well. But it's good to see, again, that we have a lot of interest in the various courses we offer. Just an FYI, I'll be sending you an invite for graduation. I know that seems weird, but we're about two months away from that, so I'll send you an invite for that. So, it gets on your calendar. I did not pull seniors this year, because the basic feedback I heard last year was, we better be having this outside next year. So, I don't think I really need to ask them if we're gunner or not, so. Now, we just need to guarantee the good weather, and then Jim, that you'll be there to set up the stage again. Make sure your wife is there to make sure you do it right.
Yes, yes, happy to help.
March 5th, and thanks to Heather, I know she put this out on social media, but we had an AED CPR hands-on training, something we did before COVID, and then we're going to do it again in 2020, and then obviously COVID hit and we didn't do it. We had volunteers from Ridgeview, local fire departments, other just community volunteers come in. And we had over 400 students there that day, and basically, they took part in three stations. You might have seen, one was just hands-on CPR training. They had, must have had 70 or 80 of those inflatable dummies down there. A different group went to the AED, and again, worked in small groups around a table. And then another group listened to survivor stories for about 15 to 20 minutes, and then they would just rotate between the three stations. And, I mean, it was really cool. You know, and our kids were great, and a lot of them took an active interest. But it's one of those cool things that, you know, you never want to think you're going to use it, but you just never know, obviously. And for our kids to take part in that, and again, for some actual hands-on training, we were just, again, really lucky that we had the volunteers come. And for, you know, an hour and a half, it was really a productive use of that hour and a half for some real training that our kids got, and our staff participating as well. And then lastly, just, again, the last month has been, in a good way, really busy with state tournaments and everything else going on, and you throw in that training. But we've also started MCA training, or MCA testing. Guess got to publicly, Ann Aldrich has been just unbelievably terrific, just kind of doing a lot for us. And just our kids, you know, one of the, we want, you know, we want our scores to go up, and we know that's not the only thing we measure, but our kids have really given us a terrific effort this year, and we're seeing it. Again, I don't know our final scores, but just our early scores are really good. So, again, it's just, and just thanks to our teachers, too, because it has been just a really, really chaotic month. I think we went through a stretch of like three weeks where I think we literally had two normal days. So, there's a lot that's going on, but I just really appreciate the kids and the staff's flexibility to kind of just keep everything going and allow kids to be, I mean, like I said, it's great to be at state tournaments, and it's great that we've had two groups now participate, you know, go to nationals, as Paul will talk about, so just want to pump, we thank them, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gertan.
Good evening, everybody. Not a lot to update you on from the last meeting. I just want to talk a little bit about what our leadership team is working on right now. One of our goals this year was to really try to eliminate the need for kids to have homework as a consequence for not successfully learning at school. So, we just finished a work session last week, and what we're in the process of doing right now is auditing everything we do, all day, from advisory through the different exploratory classes, what is happening during core instruction time, how are we actually leveraging parent involvement? Or aren't we? Looking at our flex model, how we use conference hours. We have 16 hours, are we using those productively? And the biggie is looking at how to install what's called a win period in each grade level. So, essentially, kids that aren't securing standards, especially in reading and math, where we're hitting a goal, we will hit a goal of 85% at some point. Those kids have additional instructional time. Kids that are accomplishing or are on track still get enrichment exploratories. So, we're kind of knee-deep in that right now. Things are moving along, though, really well. I really appreciate how everyone has pulled together, looking at a lot of data that we've collected this year. We should be getting schedule registration stuff out mid-April. So, that's a little bit delayed, but that shouldn't be a problem. So, kids are doing great, we're ready for spring break. But we, our culture's in a really good spot, and everyone's just moving along together, so things are going well. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell.
Good evening. Tonight, my updates are focusing on our strategic commitment for all students exhibiting physical, social, and emotional well-being, and feeling connected to their school, with feeling connected to their school being the main one. So, since the last time I was here with you, we had our I Love to Read Family Evening, which was a huge success. I can't tell you specifically how many students we had, because we did not count them, but we had over 350 children in the building, and that could include younger siblings as well. So, I'd like to shout out and thank the I Love to Read Committee for all of their hard work in planning this event, some of whom are here with us this evening. Donna Sternagel, Amy Frank, Leah Jekyll, Emily Narlock, Tammy Kuntz, Vicky Severson, Leah Christensen, Nikki Hunkins, and Jenny Hoover. We also had many staff volunteer at this event, which made it a huge success. So, Donna, Angie Hillman, Michelle Shaw, Angie Johnson, Sarah Rest, Tammy Kuntz, Courtney Johnson, Courtney Rice now, excuse me, Leah Christensen, Hannah Roshold, Heather Proodall, Emily Narlock, Heather Caro, Amy Frank, Leah Jekyll, Julie Calberg, Misty Roberts, Melissa Getzko, Ellie Fader, Vicky Severson, Monica Goodrum, Linda Stewart, Rachel Mukow, and Nikki Hunkins and Jenny Hoover. And lastly, thank you to the PTO for their support of that evening. They give us some money to make it all possible, and for us to be able to give books to every kid. Mayor Baseball also helped out with that, so that was awesome. We also had our fourth-grade Spring Sing event that we held at the PAC on March 7th. Thank you to Bob and the high school staff for allowing us to do that. Hannah Roshold organized that in her new role as our music teacher. It was a big success. Thank you to Leah Christensen for serving as the stagehand for that event. Monica Goodrum, Kurt Becker, Scott Isaacson, Tammy Kuntz, and Jamie Rankin for helping students to be successful with it. Nikki Hunkins, Bob, Chris Behrens, Darren, and Tracy Taylor for helping to kind of greet families, show them where to enter, manage parking. Darren was out there showing folks where to park. We got a lot of good feedback from parents. We had tried it during the day, as I shared with you last time. I was here to make sure that students could have that opportunity, and we didn't hear anything about it being a really inconvenient time for parents. All of our students were able to participate. It was a great opportunity to showcase what we do in our classrooms every day. And then, on March 8th, we held our Last Rural Recognition Service Assembly that focuses on the skills that we actually teach in our SEL curriculum, and that focused on problem solving. So, our CCC team collaborated to plan the activity for the assembly, which was a skit, where a student went through his day and had to make choices about which was a better problem and kind of problem solve throughout the day. The kids helped us by shouting out which choice was the better choice to make. So, thank you to Monica Goodrum for putting together the script. Dan Klein for playing the role of Danny, our student, who's going through his day, complete with a kindergarten-sized backpack. And then Leah Jekyll, Karen Switzer, Abby Vasquez, Jamie Rankin, and Katie Brandenburg for representing the different choices throughout the day. Our next event that we have is our second night of spring conferences tomorrow evening. We had our first last Thursday. Any questions?
I heard Mr. Klein's quite an actor.
He did a...
He was, he was. I was sitting in the audience, he was fantastic.
Yeah, you saw him.
I didn't take any pictures, though.
Oh, I can't give that picture for the crowd, I believe.
Perfect. And the way that you actually were able to bring them, bring them back. We've tried that at our house, limited success.
Oh, the chant?
The chant, yeah, we've tried it.
I was surprised to learn one day we had a different nurse serving in our health office, that her child has now decided she wants to be a principal when she grows up. She's a kindergartner. And when she reenacts me at home, she says, "When I say bring it, you say back." Stuck with throughout the day.
We've tried, and great job on the event from the I Love to Read Month.
That was all the I Love to Read Committee.
Yeah, it was well-attended, hard to find a parking spot, so.
Very challenging.
Anything else for Ms. O'Connell?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dimler.
I don't know, that might be kind of hard to follow. So, for community ed, I just want to start with, we've opened registration for the summer and next year. So, our two biggest programs, Early Childhood opened its registration on January 25th. You might know we have 84 preschoolers enrolled for next year. 32 of those are three-year-olds, and 52 are four- and five-year-olds. So, we still have that registration open, we're still really promoting it. We've got yard science going up soon, some are actually already out. I'm proud to be a preschooler, so hoping that will help entice families to get that registration in. And then with our ECFE, we've, we are also going to be giving out bibs with the Watertown Mayor logo for all of our new families who bring in their infants. We are finding that our daytime classes in ECFE are going great, strong. Our evening classes are struggling to get families to come. We are looking forward to our Kids Self-Sale on April 20th, if you want to mark your calendar, and our kickoff to summer on May 22nd. For childcare, we opened up registration on March 7th. We have got, for the summer, we've got 20 four- and five-year-olds registered, 89 K through six. And next school year, we've got 25 four-and-fives, and 66 kindergarten through sixth graders for after-school, before and after school. And in our infants, we've got about 18 registered for the 24, 25-year. Nine of them are holds, that means they're pregnant or looking for that spot, and nine are renewals. 22 toddlers and 27 three-year-olds, nine of which are in the preschool program as well. So, those are going to be a little bit harder to get all of them in because of staffing. So, just making, we're really working on trying to get that staffing, so we can get all of those kids in. Our summer catalog is out, hopefully you have received it. Registration opens on April 8th, and we do have some data in the intro part of our catalog, but our fall catalog will be where we summarize all of our data for 23, 24, and that will be on the back. That's community ed right now, any questions?
Glad the pool's back up and running.
Yes, we are really excited about that.
Classes are...
Classes are actually awful.
They're a lot larger than before, so. Good problem to have.
Right.
Anything else for Ms. Dimler? Alright, thank you. Mr. Veal. No slideshow tonight?
No slideshow tonight, not even in my absence, Mr. Schuler took care of that last time, too, so that was very nice. Hopefully, my report for you tonight will be short and sweet. Just a couple of things, curriculum-wise, our Social Studies Committee, 6 through 12, is starting to finalize what they're looking at for textbooks. We are looking at Northern Lights, which is the same one for sixth grade, McGraw-Hill for seventh grade, which will be the first new textbook in about 25 years, from what I understand, for seventh graders. Eighth grade is going to continue with their same TCI Geography Live program. Geography 9 will be from, would be from Pearson, US History. 11 would be from McGraw-Hill, and our CIS history class will be from Norton, which was required. We still have about three or four to finalize. We're going to look at meeting together on Monday, April 1st, that Professional Development Day, so that's part of my Professional Development report as well, to get that finalized. And then, I believe, we have, I think, on the 16th of April is when our DAC team meets. We'll get, 23rd, excuse me, thank you. And we'll get that all going through our parent committees, through their lens, and then we'll be talking to you shortly thereafter to get approval for that. From our Professional Development, our Letters 2, Volume 2, which I think Mr. Schuler talked to you about that Science of Reading training last time, from the READ Act, will be starting Volume 2 on April 1st with our Phase 1 students, or at least 30 students, 32 of our Phase 1 teachers, to get them completely Science of Reading trained. We have approximately six or seven that did not go through that Volume 1, so we're working on figuring out how to get them into probably a different training since, well, we'll, because we have to get that done by next summer, so. Going through both Volume 1 and Volume 2 would probably be far too intense for any one human being to go through. So, but we'll, we're going to work on that. I talked to you about science, social studies, and our MCAs. Bob mentioned, we started our MCAs in the high school. He did a wonderful job of telling you good information without getting any summary information, because we can't do that until August, to you, but we are off to a good start, and it... One of the things that I've talked to Bob about is, just really thrilled that it looks like we're getting a more accurate picture of where kids really are. They're putting forth an effort, and that's all we really want, is let's get an accurate picture of where we're at, so we can kind of move the needle from there. And we'll be starting with our MCAs for the elementary and middle school in April and early May, and get that wrapped up as well. Any questions?
Yes, I do. When you were mentioning all the different curriculum and like the McGraw-Hill, all those different vendors?
Yes.
Is there a way to get a better cost if we go with one vendor, one type? I, I'm just thinking, you know, instead of having all of that, if we can say, we like your curriculum?
I'll bring that up with the committee, I believe, I did not get that impression from Norton or from Pearson.
Okay.
McGraw-Hill, there's some potential of getting some digital consolidation of some costs if we go with, I think she said, six or more titles, so.
Just something to think about as we look forward.
Exactly, so that's part of the, you know, part of the consideration. And I will say, that group is very cost-conscious. So, if we have that, and they're using these as resources as they think they are, there's certainly a possibility for some negotiations, absolutely.
Awesome. Anything else for Mr. Veal? Alright, thank you. Mr. Samansky.
Hello again. Spring sports started on last Monday. The weather has been absolutely amazing, it's been wonderful. I think it's the first time in many years that we were outside day one using turf and our grass fields. My understanding that that will all come to a crashing end later this week, but we were able to get out there early, and it was a lot of fun. Participation numbers, to date so far, we are down 17 on the athletic side compared to last year's numbers. However, middle school track is yet to get going, they'll get going after spring break. So, there's, those numbers are very low right now, it's just, we just got to get some kids to register and that sort of stuff. Big winner this spring so far, softball, they're up 10. In the activity side of things, we were up eight. Knowledge Bowl was our big winner, they were up 21 compared to last year, so that's very exciting for them. As you heard, Mock Trial is our state champion and has qualified for Nationals coming up in early May, going to Delaware. BPA is also going to Nationals in Chicago as well. We'll have more information on that in our next meetings. We're going to celebrate our activities, folks, next month, and that's going to be another long meeting as well, but that's a good problem. Coaching search has been ongoing, and hopefully that will be wrapped up tomorrow afternoon, so. Girls soccer, I'm sorry.
Well, hopefully, spring break will allow the weather to recorrect itself back to.
We're hoping.
Anything else for Mr. Samansky? Thank you. Mr. Schuler.
Yeah, the first part of my, Mr. Chair, first part of my update is going to be kind of more of a construction update. We didn't have ICS here this time, so we didn't put it in the agenda, but I'll kind of do a quick recap. As you mentioned, the pool is pretty much in substantial completion and is being heavily used, as you mentioned. We are waiting for some additional doors and hardware to be, come on-site, and we should be wrapping that up here pretty soon as well. And then some new branding inside the pool, I think that's kind of exciting, too. In fact, Heather and I were just finishing that up this afternoon, and just kind of rebranding it to our, obviously, our current district logos, including our record board, lane lines, things like that, to really clean it up in there, it's looking like a really updated facility. Also, Aqualogic is coming back tomorrow to do some, just some sanding, as we've talked about a little bit. The sides of the pool have a rough granular feel to it, almost like a sandpaper feel. Although, some of us, and you've noted this, that it's getting better, but they are coming out tomorrow to do... out tomorrow to do some just general sanding. They have a sanding stick essentially with a fine, fine sandpaper that will help kind of get that a little bit more, less abrasive. So they're working on that. The parking lot improvement project, the abatement bond, right now, we're working through the permitting process through the State of Minnesota and the plumbing plan review, and then also the water management through Carver County, stormwater and the water quality piece. And starting to come into getting closer to, as we're getting some changing of information and what we need to do to correct a few items. So we're getting close there. And then New Look is our general contractor, as you recall, and they're starting to, hopefully this week, we should have some phasing and staging times. I know the principals and especially Amy Dimler at the CLC is really waiting anxiously to kind of program how the doors we're going to have access to and what parking lots we're going to have access to at what times of the year. So trying to get that information quickly. And then lastly, too, in terms of parking lots, the Highway 27 project, which is our downtown, I guess that's Lewis Avenue, but heading towards the golf course, is also going to be delayed till August. And we had some concerns about hauling gravel and what have you, and that road being shutting, shut down. They're going to have to come up Angel Avenue as the detour route, which would have kind of maybe caused some conflicts with our CLC project. So we know that that is being now delayed to August. And I guess part of the reason is they wanted to wait till after Rails to Trails to get that started. Flooring replacement, the middle school flooring replacement is going to get its second half removed, so whatever wasn't done the first half over the winter break is now going to get started here, and hopefully that'll be completed at the end of our spring break week. So they'll come back to just the bare floors with the floor prep showing like it currently is. And then, again, we're hoping to begin that remodel right away in June, just trying to line up those contractors, making sure that's ready to go. And then also just some final warranty and closeout. Dan Heimetz from ICS was on-site today, and he was working through some punch list items with Rochan and CRC as two of our contractors, so.
Darren, could I just interrupt you quickly?
Please.
What's the reasoning behind taking out the flooring now instead of just waiting? Is there, does that allow for, I mean...
Well, we don't, I guess the biggest reason in a certain way, and I don't think we wanted to wait. If we can get started in June, soon as the staff and students leave, that's to be our benefit. If you recall, last time we did it, we were rushed right up to the last minute. Actually, during teacher workshop week, we were laying floors.
Sure.
Not a good process, so we're trying to get ahead of the game, get on those contractors' list to put us at the front, because every school in the State of Minnesota, this is their three-month window to get work done.
Right.
So we're trying to get in front of that.
Is there any cause for concern for like our custodial staff being able to keep that clean, like for the, you know, laying down?
The cement right now? No.
It's been pretty good.
There's glue or...
A little bit of dust. There's some dust residue, but not much.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been pretty good, to be honest with you.
And then we'll probably have it cleaned before they start laying
Sure.
the new flooring, so that's part of their prep package, too, so. But yeah, like Superintendent Schuler said, we want to get on their, you know, the day school's out, we want them in.
Yeah.
Laying the floor.
I didn't know if there was, I mean, it's like you could do it in May, but there's no really viable time to do it then.
No. And having spring break with no students in the building, it gives them time.
And then my last point was just to, I've mentioned in my Friday updates that once a month, our principals and directors, we get to go and observe teachers, two teachers in each building. So we're on our second rotation now. We've been in every building. Today, we got to see middle school, and Mr. Gerton lined us up with Ms. Hager and Ms. Regnar in 8th grade, so 8th grade math, 8th grade English Language Arts. It was really fun to see. I know we walked away today and we really, it's fun that we get to go in and we get to observe for 15 minutes, take notes, we get to come back, and then just caucus and have conversations about what is good teaching, what is it looking like? Some areas that we thought, hey, it looked great, some areas for possible improvement. And it's just been really beneficial. It's probably one of the best things that I've done, even before I was a principal, just having some good conversations. And it's amazing to see, you know, the talent of our teachers and certainly the talent of our administrative staff, because we're having great conversations. And hopefully, it improves teaching and sharpens our skills when we go out and observe teachers and working in their buildings. So it's been really fun to see. And again, today, we saw two really top-notch teachers with two really good lessons, so just been a fun process. I think our admin team has enjoyed it, too. So that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Board member reports since last month. Anybody? Beulah?
Well, marketing and communication, we've been doing it more like as an online discussion, just items that have come up, like replacing the new, replacing the pool sign outside of the pool where kids have...
That vinyl that keeps...
Yep. Just some of the other, like the foyer, the entrance to the high school, over our concession stand area at the top, what those, you know, new branding or new signage, signs would look like. So it's just, it's kind of just been an ongoing conversation, which seems to be working very well, since we don't have any, like, big items to, you know, really sit down and hash out at this point. So if we do ever feel like we need to meet in person,
Yep.
we'll make that adjustment, so.
I can give a couple of updates, shorter ones here. Finance committee obviously has met numerous times over the last month and will, over the next month as well. From the facilities side, the BAC, still meeting every two weeks, much to probably Jeff and Jim's chagrin. It seems like that's the gift that keeps on giving. But one of the things that we're looking at now is sort of where we are at on our LTFM, the Long-Term Facilities Management List, and trying to figure out what are some of those, you know, we've done a ton over the last three, four years. It's sort of what's next so we can try to be in front of things, whether it's some roofing or facility, small facility updates and stuff like that, and just so we can kind of start tracking that.
Is there a list you guys can share with us of what some of those items are?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious to know what you're looking at.
We'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
The foundation's meeting tonight, but they're making plans for some summer activities and another fall fundraiser.
Okay. More to come on that.
And Southwest, we're actually meeting tomorrow, so I'll know more after our meeting.
I do have one more update. Yesterday, we had the MSBA board meeting, first one I've attended, full board meeting. Today was day at the Capitol. I think they had about 100 and, I couldn't make it, I think they had about 140 registered school board members, superintendents, and just kind of descended upon the Capitol, you know, talking to your legislators about education, you know, getting their stance, trying to push forward the, you know, the funding, the schools. There's some legislative updates. I know Friday, they have in the mornings legislative updates through MSBA. But there's a couple of big bills. One of them's the READ Act. Current, as of, well, yesterday, I think they got about $100 million in that bill to support funding across the state. It's still to be determined kind of how that funding's going to be dispersed, what that's going to look like. There's items in the bill of kind of maybe reducing some of that training hours, just to reduce the burden, or even using that $100 million to support subs. You know, where if you have to have a teacher go out and do the training, it'll pay for that. Currently, however, there's no discussions for reimbursement for the early adopters, which I think we're one of the early adopters, so that's not a good thing. Discussed before about that finance bill, there's really no additional funding for education. And one of the things that was brought up, and I volunteered, but I'm going to reach out to you guys, too. The Daler Group is working with MSBA, so that's where Mr. Wilkie went, is working with the Daler Group. They're looking to try to get more information on engagement for MSBA. And they're looking to kind of do focus groups, so if any of you guys are interested in being a part of those, shoot me an email and I can kind of pass that information up. So I just figured, since we know the Daler Group, they helped us with our referendum, you know, former superintendent is there now. So that's the update from MSBA.
Just maybe lastly, too, just to note that the Booster Bash was last weekend. I know many people attended, but another great turnout and a great fundraiser for our activities and athletics. And I'll make sure we note that, because they do so much for our schools and put on an awesome event, so again, thank you to them.
Do we know what the final number was at all?
It's around $30,000.
Okay, awesome.
So.
Another full event, so.
Yeah.
Anything else? Alright. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Danielson, second by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned at 7:36 PM.